...nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any town council reports or correspondence tonight?
Yes, I do. Yes, I just wanted to let the community know that this year, Councilor Lennon, Garvin, and I worked to create for the community two community forums. And the first of which was in June, and our next one is going to be Monday, September 19th, 2016, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. at the Cape Elizabeth Middle School Cafeteria. And the purpose of the event is for town councils to be able to reach out to citizens for two reasons: to obtain feedback from them, and as well to encourage public participation in our 2017 goal-setting process. So we're looking for everybody to give us some feedback on our goals. It will be only one piece of a multi-plonged process, but what we're hoping for is for a great event with broad participation and representation from the community, and as well from the town council. So again, mark your calendars. It's September 19th. I hope to see you all there.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Great. We'll move on. Next item up, Finance Committee Report. Mike, I think you're going to give us an overview.
Yeah, just have my report with the audit for June 30, 2016 is nearly done. They're still waiting for confirmation through other odds and ends, but the audit process has gone well, and everyone can look forward to receiving tax bills about a week from today.
Wonderful. Anyone have any comments or questions for the manager? No? Great. Thanks, Mike. Our next item is Citizen Opportunity for Discussion of Items Not on the Agenda. Do we have some folks who'd like to speak tonight? Please come right up. Give us your name, your address, and if you'd limit your remarks to about three minutes, that would be great. Thank you.
Will do. My name is David Weatherby. I live at 14 Stonegate Road. And I'd just like to comment tonight on a few things related to the Beach to Beacon road race that occurred this past weekend. So, good evening. I would like to start by thanking the town council and the town of Cape Elizabeth for another extraordinary Beach to Beacon this past weekend. As the 2014 Ralph Gould recipient, and also the winner of the 2016 CF Alumni Award, largely resulting from my work associated with this race, I am here tonight for two reasons. Number one, to reemphasize the purpose of the race, and number two, to clarify some erroneous statements which were made public in an article published by the Maine Sunday Telegram, whose intent was to blemish the stellar reputation of our event. The town of Cape Elizabeth is a stakeholder in this race, and it's important for you all to know and understand the event in case you have any questions. As stated in the Beach to Beacon bylaws, and this is a direct quote, "The purpose of the corporation is to promote and encourage long-distance running and to educate the public to its benefits, in conjunction with the establishment of an annual 10-kilometer road race." End quote. Nowhere is there a charitable component mentioned in the purpose of the race, yet the race helps generate over $150,000 a year for Maine-based charities. And I'm going to cycle to you a letter and a picture that came today from Donna Dwyer at Mine Place Teen Center. Donna was a graduate of the class of '82 in Cape Elizabeth. And she ended by saying this, "Thank you is not enough in this case. Please know that this incredible experience will resonate forever, and that the inspiring memories will remain firmly etched. Thank you for impacting the lives of our 500 kids, and thank you for allowing us to be part of your feel-good spotlight. Touched indeed to the core." They raised over $50,000 from the race. In addition to that, they got tremendous exposure over the course of the weekend and leading up to it. I'd also like to point out that nonprofits are not required by federal law to give to charity. Many road races do, some don't. Our primary objective has always been and will continue to be to put on a world-class road race, showcasing the beauty of the Maine coast of the running world on the same roads that Joni trained here in her formative years. And also, to support the TD Charitable Foundation-designated charity. We have never fallen short of our purpose in putting on one of the best road races in the world, both for elites and all the other 6,500 runners. This is evidenced by the race filling up in under four minutes. We do far more than put on a 10K road race. We create a complete road racing experience that leaves first-time runners, legacy runners, and those in between both inspired and wanting to come back again. And none of that has to do with generating money to charity, yet we do that as well. Now, regarding the article, I'd just like to say that despite knowing our bib charity program existed, and when I say bib, that means registrations that they get associated with the race, despite knowing the program existed and having access to each of each of these organizations through a recent news release about the program, plus all of the beneficiary contact info's on the website, the reporter made no effort to determine how much is currently raised through the program other than acknowledging deep into his story that in 2012, the race generated $134,000 for all of the past beneficiaries. In addition, there was no effort to extrapolate the amount raised through race history, including what would have been a much higher figure. Why not? I'll tell you why. It didn't fit the narrative. It's the lack of the reporter to determine the true charitable impact of the race created a false impression, and that's poor journalism. His comparison to the Falmouth Road Race is misleading at best. And I want you guys to understand this. Let's set aside that the race in Falmouth, Mass. is twice the size and twice as old as the race here in Cape Elizabeth. What Falmouth does, and this is their choice, they charge each of their charities $175 for their registrations, over 2,000 of them. And they count that as part of their revenue. They then flow that amount through their P&amp;L and distribute the profits back to the charities to create the perception that they're donating the profits of the race to the charity. In fact, they give less money to the charities than they actually bring in revenues from the bibs. Beach to Beacon, on the other hand, separates the two. Okay? It's important. We do this so as not to muddy the operational P&amp;L of the race. Beach to Beacon's approach of allowing the beneficiaries to fundraise directly with their supporters who want to run the race, and then keep all of the gain over a normal cost of bib, is a much cleaner approach. It keeps the dollars at the beneficiary level, doesn't run them through the race operation, and it ensures the race does not use charitable dollars in its operating budget, and allows for a true accounting of the operations of the race. If the reporter wanted to create a true, real-dollar comparison of the two events, he should have included the charity program from Beach to Beacon into his numbers. He didn't do that. He also tried to compare our race to other races in Maine, and as you know, Beach to Beacon is a world-class event with professional athletes competing for $90,000 prize money, requires operations and infrastructure at the same level as other world-class races around the country. There's not another race in Maine with professional athletes that compete for even one-tenth of the amount of money that's offered here at Beach to Beacon. There's no comparison in Maine that even exists. I'd also like to point out that there's no big reveal in the article. Beach to Beacon's been filing 990s since inception, and both Joan Benoit Samuelson and Dave McGilvery have received compensations at the beginning of the event. Their compensation is absolutely in line with industry standards. Again, the reporter did no research on communicating what industry standards in terms of compensation is. In addition to that, I would ask, what do other executive directors of nonprofits with similar revenues receive in compensation? How come nothing was mentioned about that? This is Joni and Dave's day job. It's their livelihood. To host an incomparable 10K that attracts the finest world athletes to participate among thousands in our community requires the race to work with and employ professionals with impeccable credentials and experience consistent with our purpose. This is what we do. I'm almost done. The article states, quote, "McGilvery, the race director, has paid a $58,000 management fee in 2014 as an onsite consultant." That's not true. Dave has not personally been paid one dime by the race. The management fee is paid to Dimsey, Inc., and it's used to pay expenses directly related to the event, as well as a percentage of his company's overhead. He has operating costs to running his business like any other business out there. He also states, quote, "Dimsey handles logistics for races around the world, including the Boston Marathon. Dimsey received $79,097 for Beach to Beacon in 2014." End quote. Again, it's misleading. It makes it look like Dimsey nets all this money. Not true. The money goes toward expense reimbursement, equipment rental, and what we call consultant fees, and that's 40-plus people doing the hard work of all the setup, teardown, everything along the course. Strictly a bypass of cost in providing equipment and fees. As you can imagine, I could go on, so in summary, I'm just going to say it's poor journalism in another sad case of, quote, "No good deed goes unpunished." I'll end my comments with this. Saturday was perhaps the greatest day in the history of the race, a milestone in resurgence of American distance running. Ben True won the TD Beach to Beacon right here on the roads of Cape Elizabeth, the first time in the history an American has won the road race. The town of Cape Elizabeth deserves a big chunk of the credit. We thank you for being a generous host and participating in the race in so many ways: police, fire, EMS, public works, facilities and transportation, home stays, runners, volunteers, spectators. We hope we can continue this tremendous partnership into the future, and we thank you very much for your support.
Thank you. Was there someone else who wanted to speak? Yes, please. Come right up.
Good evening. My name is Kate Wolf. I live at 5 Crescent View Avenue. I'd like to talk about the situation we have with Airbnbs in town. I have a neighbor who's been running an illegal Airbnb for two summers now. He's been told that he needs to comply. He hasn't even filled out any permits. I'd like to know why illegal Airbnb people who are running it are not being fined on a daily basis for every day that they're breaking the laws. It states on Airbnb's website that their hosts are required to know the town zoning laws and comply to the town zoning laws. If Cape Elizabeth requires that they have a permit and an inspection before they're running an Airbnb, there are some towns that penalize people who are doing this illegally. The rate that they collect from the people with they're renting to, plus court fees. And if we're more aggressive about fining people, those fines can go toward what it costs to make people comply. I know that there's a burden, that there are a lot of Airbnbs running this town, and that it takes some manpower to make sure this is enforced. But if the people who are running these Airbnbs illegally are fined, that can cover those costs of the administration. It's been like a frat party next door. There's up to 25 people staying there with nine cars parked, and more than one party per week. My understanding of the zoning laws is he can rent out one unit with a total of six people. If you count up the number of beds it states on his Airbnb listings, there's 25 people that he's renting to. I've had people at 2:30 in the morning underneath my bedroom window hollering about how many more air mattresses they're going to haul in. And it's just not right. It's gone on too long, and nothing's happening. The latest I've heard is that Sean Tamir, the owner of that Airbnb, wants to try and change the zoning laws. What I want to know is why isn't he shut down now? Why isn't he being fined every day that he has people in that unit? And it's like everything is slanted toward the owner of the house and not his neighbors, and it's just not right. And I'd like to know what the town council can do about it.
Thank you. Our next item on the agenda is the manager's monthly report. And I mention that because I have a feeling that Michael may say a few words about the Beach to Beacon, and I suspect there are other council members who would like to weigh in on that as well. I'm sorry, before you go, I didn't catch your name.
Kate Wolf.
Kate Wolf. Thank you. And before you go, I was also going to ask the manager if he might respond to your specific concern, and particularly, given that we have the short-term rentals ordinance. I'm not clear myself on what the answer is to your question, but I'd like to find out.
I've been talking with Mr. McGilvery. I know my neighbors that have been talking with Mr. McGilvery about this. It's just gone on too long. There's been no, nothing changed.
Okay, thank you. Mike, do you want to respond to that, or should we look at that as a council?
I usually don't respond until after citizens have a full opportunity. Maybe another citizen wanted to speak, I'm not sure.
Anyone else who'd like to speak? Thank you for that reminder. No? Okay. We'll move on to the manager's monthly report. I know that you're looking for something.
Yeah, you know, okay. You know, this is something that the code enforcement officer's been working on. You know, all I can do is read to you what the code enforcement officer has written, if you'd like me to do that.
I'm curious myself. I'd like to know.
This was what he wrote to one of the other neighbors. "Thank you for writing with pressure concerns. Last Monday, I met with Mr. Tamir in the morning and sent him a formal notice of violation in the afternoon," said the code officer. "He does not believe he is violating the ordinance, plans to appeal my notice of violation to the zoning board of appeals. If he submits an appeal notification, most of the neighbors will be notified on the meeting date and time. I don't know if he's appealed yet or not. Regarding the building in south of this illegal three-unit apartment building, I've been on the property a few times, inspected one of the apartments. It was up to code. There's hot smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors are concerned. I have not seen anything that causes me to think this property has an elevated fire risk." And then it goes on to the short-term rentals, and that... And then there was actually two emails. You know, as often happens, you know, the resident, I'm not going to tell you, but, you know, he hasn't cooperated, and the code enforcement officer's still continuing to work. You know, I was looking for the notice of violation, and quickly, I'm not able to see it here.
That's okay. I didn't want to put you on the spot, but I thought you might have an immediate response.
No, but I can say that the code enforcement officer is working on it, that the property owner has not been cooperative, and it appears to be a violation of the ordinance.
Okay. Thank you. Shall we move on to your monthly report?
I'm not sure if there are any questions on that first. Any questions?
Where was the property? Did you guys catch where it is? Do you know where it is?
What's that?
The property itself that she was complaining about.
It's sort of the old farmhouse, as you look at the kettle-coat takeout that's diagonally and packed up.
Oh, it's like green.
Impressive, yeah.
Yep, okay.
Can I say one thing about the Beach to Beacon? I wasn't here, unfortunately, but have you written a letter to the editor?
The board of the race is considering...
David, could you, if you'd like to answer a question, could you just come right back up to the microphone?
I just think, given all that you've said, it makes a huge amount of sense to set the record straight publicly in the very same periodical that published what you think was false information.
Yeah, there's obviously a few schools of thought on that, but I do expect that the race will respond at a minimum to its stakeholders, and whether or not it even wants to dignify the comments in the article, I'm not sure about that. That's a determination that will be made by the race board. I'm just responding as a winner of a couple prestigious awards in town, and somebody who lives here and who was president of the race from 1998 to 2013.
Any other comments or questions? No? Are we ready to move on? I will say that the manager has given all of us on the council a wonderful new packet of information this month. The town manager's update dated August 2016. I think you'll see some of it on the website. I won't say anymore, because I think the manager may want to say a few things himself.
Thank you. Just very briefly. First, I'll take the Beach to Beacon first, even though it's not on my list. I just want to say that, you know, every indication is that the race was a success. We had a department head meeting this morning. We, all of the different departments, they were involved with it. They said that it was mishap-free, no problems. Couple people taken to the hospital, that's to be expected. But we also had 639 Cape Elizabeth runners who finished, which is not a record amount, but it's still... Well, yeah, there's a lot. We won't go into that. They have a lot of people registered who were in the race. But regardless, 639, that's good. And David Weatherby thanked an awful lot of folks. The two that he really didn't thank is the organizing committee that puts on the race. You know, you mentioned volunteers. I'm not sure you really mentioned the organizing committee, maybe you did. And the second one is, we do get help from other communities, other than the Cape Elizabeth Town Government, the Cape Elizabeth School Department. And I do want to thank them. If it wasn't for South Portland and Scarborough and some of the other communities who pitch in, we couldn't do an event of this size. So I do want to acknowledge them as well. Other than that, I did want to mention Stella Patton passed away on July 11th. Stella was the first woman to serve in the Cape Elizabeth Town Council. She was very devoted. Of course, she served three years. I was here part of the time she served. She served until 1978. But, you know, I also knew her. Her husband was very involved in Rotary, and actually had a chance to spend about an hour and a half with her at a dinner. Sat next to her about a year ago, and it was right after Bob passed away. She was doing well at that time, so it was very sad to see that she had passed on. But when she was here, she just, there was so much going on in that period, and anyone who served in the council, that almost all the meetings went midnight. They were two regular meetings a month, not just one. And it was a time when people really had to give a lot of time and service. I know you all do now, but back then, it was, if you think it's bad now, only they didn't have the internet to deal with. And, you know, as I mentioned here, Stella had a newsletter report to the community that some of the other councillors didn't like. But anyway, she kept to it. She kept doing it. And, you know, at one point, there was even a parody that someone put out about the newsletter. But it just shows there were different times. But she was a great lady, a great person, and well devoted to everything for work on the council. Didn't want to mention, the pool is now closed. That project has begun. It's going to be closed for six or seven weeks. The filtering system is going to be totally updated, and I think everyone's going to see a much nicer, better feel for the pool with the air quality and other aspects when the work is done. The garden club, Councilor Garvin was there as well, had a great forum on winter moth. Do you want to add anything? Can I?
Yes, please do.
To Jamie?
Sure. I was impressed at the standing-room-only crowd that we had at the library last Tuesday. We had a state entomologist, and our town arborist, Mike Duddy, both give presentations and answer questions from the audience pertaining to the winter moth infestation that's certainly been growing in the last few years in the area. Cape Elizabeth, among the coastal communities that are most apt to be impacted, Cape Elizabeth is one of the most impacted in southern Maine, Cape Elizabeth, Kittery, and up in the Harpswell area. The challenge before us is that there's not a really good single solution to the problem. And so if you're driving around town, particularly if you head up 77 now, and certainly down near two lights and other areas of town, you'll see a lot of deforestation happening. And the various mitigation efforts to help arrest the problem, one is, they've done twice already, the state has, through federal funding, released parasitic flies that the winter moth worms ingest and then die from. But then if we do any spraying of pesticides, then that unfortunately wipes out the parasitic flies, too. So it's kind of a catch-22 problem there. The best thing that we could ever hope for is a really, really cold winter, and several of them, which would help. But we haven't had many of those lately either. So in any case, going forward, the town is likely looking at some issues relating to dying trees. And one of the things that Mike was very good to point out, if you are considering planting new trees, or you're doing landscaping or work like that, there are a number of trees that are not as susceptible to the winter moth problem, that you should absolutely feel free to reach out to Mike, as our town arborist, to find out, well, hey, I like this kind of tree, but it's susceptible. What's a good substitute? He has a long list of those. The other thing, and it was of particular relevance to the garden club, was that the movement of plants, specifically if you're dividing up like hostas and irises, like many of us do in our gardens, actually has the risk of transporting the problem around. So what happens is these moths, the worms, fall down to the ground after they've fed, and they build their cocoons and everything in the ground. So when you actually move that plant material around, you're likely causing the problem to spread. So to the degree that you can limit that, that was encouraged as well. But in any case, it was really interesting information, and Mike Duddy is a great resource for us as town arborist. And if you have questions further than that, certainly direct them to him. And it was great to see our library being so well utilized for the event.
I mentioned to Mike that I've heard there have now been two overflow events already at the library where we didn't have a big enough room. I said, "That's a wonderful problem to have." But I was corrected, saying, "That's a terrible problem to have so soon in a new library." Look at it either way. Anything else on that, Mike?
Not on that, but just concluding my report, just a couple of quick things. There's also going to be a public forum on the proposed amphitheater at Fort Wayne's Park. The Fort Wayne's Park Committee is holding that on August 17th at 7:00 p.m. And there's information about that on our website. And in the same regard, the Community Services Committee is going to be having a forum on any input that folks want to have on the pool and fitness center. And that is at 6:30 p.m. on Thursday, August 25th, in the high school cafeteria. A couple of folks have had issues with the pool, and the allocation of lanes, and different issues. And this is just a good time to provide that input with other citizens being able to hear it, and it's an interesting forum. Then finally, Portland Headlight has a new website. I encourage everyone to look at it. It's a huge improvement over the previous site.
It's gorgeous. They did a beautiful job.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to weigh in on anything on this report? Yes, Jamie?
I would just add on the matter of the Beach to Beacon, that the town of Cape Elizabeth never looks better than it does on the first Saturday in August. And all of the people that were recognized and mentioned deserve a tremendous amount of credit for that. Also, the number of spectators that come out and support the participants. I ran the race again this year, and I'm constantly amazed that this town comes out in the way that it does. Like I said, there's just no better example of the quality of the community that we have here, from people that are the organizers, all the way down to the people watching, and everybody that makes it possible. And like I said, as a participant, my thanks goes out to those people, and I hope that they'll continue to do the great work that they do for many years to come.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? I will just second that. I think it's a tremendous asset and a wonderful event for the community. And I would also like to say that for the town employees who have taken such great care of the park, I would just like to give them extra kudos as well. I was there around sunset later that day, and then the next morning, the park was in great shape, beautiful. So thank you for all of your hard work, and thanks to the folks on the town side, too. Good. Okay, we will move on to our first, well, not quite our first agenda item, our review of draft minutes of the July 11th, 2016 meeting. Do I have a motion to accept those minutes? Thank you, Patty. Is there a second? Thank you, Sarah. Any discussion of those minutes? No? All in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number 101, 2016, Ocean House Pizza Annual License Renewal. I will be looking for a motion to approve the annual renewal of malt and vinas licenses. Yes, Jamie?
I move that we approve the annual renewal of the malt and vinas licenses for Ocean House Pizza.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Sarah. Any discussion on that? Mike, is there anything we need to know? I've looked at what was in our packets. I didn't see anything that stood out.
Deb does. Most of it laywork. Then we discussed with the department head meeting this morning, and no issues.
Good. Okay. Any discussion? Any questions? No? All in favor? Any opposed? No? That passes unanimously. We will move on to the next item, number 102, 2016, Paper Streets. I will be looking for a motion to set a public hearing on Paper Streets, and once we have a motion, we can have a little more discussion about this item.
Okay, I can do that.
Thank you.
I will move to set a public hearing for Monday, September 12, 2016, at 7:00 p.m. regarding recommendations for extending, discontinuing, or accepting the town's insipient rights in certain paper streets.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion? Thank you, Caitlin. Discussion. Questions? Comments?
Any citizens discuss.
Are there citizens who would like to speak to that? Please come right up. Thank you.
Chris Wallace. I live at 60 Edgewood Road, and I have a lot that's on Stone Drive, and it butts one of the paper streets right now. It looks like it's... It looks like it's possibly slated as a pedestrian easement. Um, the issue I have with this particular lot, um, I purchased it from a couple who had owned it for about 50 years. Uh, when they bought it, it was a buildable lot. Uh, I think it's just under 8,000 square feet. With the ordinance change, um, it was rendered non-conforming, so they couldn't build on it. Um, so if the Paper Street, um, is let go by the town, uh, that'll put me at just under 10,000 square feet. So, I'm just asking that, uh, kinda consider that. Uh, I mean, I could certainly agree that a pedestrian easement is needed, uh, for the green belt access, et cetera. Um, quite familiar with easements. Uh, I don't know, as you all know, I, uh, had to take South Portland to court on an easement on Edgewood Road. And, uh, we prevailed, but it's supposed to be a private easement, actually, for two houses, but, over the years, it's become a, just a regular street, and, uh, I've never raised any questions about it, or asked it to be enforced or anything like that, and I never planned to. But, um, it, it was quite an expense. And, um, I'm also saddled with a turnaround easement on my existing lot, even though the road does connect now. And, uh, since South Portland will not, uh, remove the discontinuance, uh, I'm still stuck, stuck with it, and Mike's familiar with it, we've had a discussion. So in any event, um, I just wanted to, uh, kinda let you know my thought, that perhaps you'd consider when you have your workshop.
Thank you.
If anybody has any questions.
Okay. Yes?
I just wanna say, the, the council's setting the public hearing on September 12th. There, there were five streets that you're still going to be looking at, uh, at a workshop, potentially, that I think will be on August 29th, although you haven't formally said that. Uh, but all, all of you said you were available that night, it's just the formality of you doing that. So, you, anyone interested in Paper Streets, you know, just, I wanna make sure everyone's aware that there will likely be a workshop prior to September 12th, at which the council could look at any of their recommendations.
Can I ask Mike a question? Just procedurally, on a few of these that say council to discuss further, however it's worded, if we make decisions on that workshop night, will we update this spreadsheet before the public hearing?
We will, but we're also, you know, we need to provide public notice of this hearing, but we won't, and if we do it two ways. One is with the newspaper ad. We were looking for the, the neighborhood meetings we have on this topic, we sent out 2,000 notices. So in this instance, what we're actually doing is sending out the notice of the hearing in the tax bills, uh, so that we've been saving a little over $1,000 by doing that. Uh, so, but the tax bills were reflected as of tonight, and not as of post. The tax bills will be going out in between. So those five are listed, still to be determined.
Okay. Or you could, okay, or you could put a link to the website if we wanted it to be, reflect the most recent. Or we could just leave it like this and have people give us feedback?
Yeah.
I'm just curious about the legality.
You know, if the council makes a, you know, makes a recommendation to the public hearing at your workshop on the 29th, uh, we'll make sure we use the website, whatever, but, uh, we'll get the word out as much as we can.
Yes, Patty?
I just have a procedural question as well. For the public hearing, typically, we might, um, proceed after the public hearing that night to potentially either accept part of this report, or what would be the process of procedure? Have you thought about how we're going to proceed through, and is it road and a road by road? Is it a grouping? What, how are we gonna move forward after that evening?
Um, when we have our workshop after this meeting tonight, I think we still need to determine what the date is for our workshop, and I think it's...
Might be September 13th.
It might be September 13th, which I think would lead to a little bit different process. But until we agree on what that date is, I'm not sure that we can, I think it's an either-or. So, if we had the public hearing on the 12th, and we didn't have our workshop until the 13th, we would get the, which, I, I, I think responds to a concern that Caitlin has often mentioned, that we have a public hearing and vote on the same night. We could have a public hearing on the 12th, have our workshop on the 13th, for further discussion of what we heard at the public hearing, and then move forward at the next meeting, at the next regular meeting, to have that vote. Yes?
You know, that, your understanding is exactly as mine, and I just wanna mention that the October meeting of the council, at which this is likely to come up for a final vote, is actually not in the usual cycle of nights, and it is scheduled for Wednesday, October 5th. And that's, that's the night that was your head on, that the decision is likely to be made on Paper Streets.
So that's Town Council meeting, Wednesday, the 5th?
It was rescheduled. It was a workshop. So then Patty, to answer your question, I think...
It's a multi-step process.
Yes. I, I think it shouldn't be a multi-step process. And I think that if we decide to do that, we have the opportunity to have further discussion at our workshop about how we would like to present the material and take our vote on, sort of on block, or group by group.
You will have, with your September meeting agenda, for also everyone to see, the formal draft motion that, uh, Derwood Parkinson, the attorney that we've had working with us on Paper Streets issues, he will have draft motions for you to look at, based on your recommendations, I thought.
Okay. Prior to the September 12th?
Prior to the, it'll be with your usual course of things, with your materials, your September meeting.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions on that?
We have a draft yet from him? We already have a draft from him, so, you know, it's, there won't be...
We don't yet.
No, I haven't seen it yet either. So there, there won't be a delay in, in getting to it.
Okay.
You'll have plenty of time.
Any other discussion on this item? No? All in favor of setting the public hearing for September 12th? Any opposed? No? Thank you, that passed unanimously. Our next item is number 103, the Comprehensive Planning Committee. Michael, would you like to introduce this?
I will. Uh, one of the council goals was to establish, uh, the process for a comprehensive planning committee to begin to meet. This is, the, uh, worked with Maureen and with the council chair to prepare a draft charge. Maureen did most of the drafting. Uh, there were a couple of changes that happened when Molly and I talked about it, uh, but this, you know, the proposal is for this to go to your workshop on, um, August 26th, is that the date? Yeah, okay. The, the not yet scheduled one?
Correct.
Yeah. The proposal is that this be referred to your workshop, likely to be August 26th.
29th, I think.
What's the date?
29th?
29th, 29th, I knew it did sound right. 29th, to review the, to review this charge.
Okay. Okay. So...
Nothing is cast in stone yet.
Right. Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to refer the draft charge to an upcoming Town Council workshop. Sarah?
Uh, I move that we have, um, a workshop. Have we already set the date, on August 29th?
We haven't set the date yet, but we, we will.
I move that we have a workshop to consider, to discuss and consider, um, the draft charge and composition of the committee, of the Comprehensive Planning Committee.
Great. Is there a second? Thank you, Patty. Any discussion on that? No? Good. All in favor? Any opposed? No? That passed unanimously. We will move on to item number 104, Affordable Housing Relief Request Update. Michael, could you introduce this item?
Yeah, on, on June 13th, the council had agreed to lift the affordable housing requirements for two moderate-income restricted condominiums in the Eastern Meadows neighborhood. Uh, and, when, when that was done, it was based on a federal index, and the, the federal indices had changed, uh, prior to your council vote, but we hadn't picked it up. So it should've, it should've provided that the maximum sale price for moderate-income affordable housing, instead of being 395,000, should've been 490,451. It was, it was actually the, the owner of the property discovered that, and he would like you to consider, uh, doing a new action, in essence, uh, here at this meeting, providing that it, the units could be sold at unqualified buyers at market rates within excess of 4051. And this is keeping with the formula that's in the existing ordinance.
Thank you. Could I have a motion on the proposed language as it's written here? Thank you, Jessica. And so move. Is there a second? Thank you, Caitlin. Any discussion on that? Nope. I'm glad this was brought to our attention. Uh, anybody else have anything to say? No? All in favor? Any opposed? No? That passed unanimously. Item number 105, the Proposed Picnic Shelter Improvements. Michael, would you like to introduce this one?
I hesitate to do this, because let me disclose that I'm a member of the, the club that's proposing this, but, uh, the Rotary Club at South Portland Cape Elizabeth provided funds back in the early 80s to do the community picnic shelter at Fort Williams. They also provided funds for an exercise for us at the same time. In fact, it was the first time I went to a Rotary function at, the, the dead town manager, who was, I think, president of the Rotary Club, sent me to the Rotary Club to go ask for the money. Uh, so, anyway, it, but, you know, like everything, it's, that's been around for a long time, it, it gets a little old, and, uh, needs some updating. And Tom Myers, who was a member of the board still, of, you, the director of community service, the director of community service of the Rotary Club, you, you had to talk about it? Is here to, you know, you have the materials, but he's here to answer any questions, and to speak for the Rotary Club on this matter.
Wonderful. Would you like to come up and say a few words?
Only because I drew the short straw. Um, my name is Tom Myers, I'm on Seaview, and I'm a member of the Rotary Club of Cape Elizabeth, uh, South Portland Cape Elizabeth. And, as Mike mentioned, the picnic shelter in that area's been a, um, favorite place of ours to help and continue to maintain. And this past spring, the, um, town took care of some routine maintenance and painting of some of the structure. You may have noticed that, um, some of the rusted beams inside, as well as the exterior. Uh, we, because we use it often, and because we know other people use it, we noticed that the area opposite the, um, flagpole, um, that, where the hot top is, everybody nod if you know where I'm talking, you know where it's at. It just looks kinda yucky if you're having an event there, as compared to the rest of the shelter with the blue stone and the beautiful view. So the, our intent was, again, working with, uh, Public Works Director, to say, what, you know, what kind of things you think we should do here? And we had one of our members, who's also a landscape architect, devise a plan that was consistent with the master plan for the, for the fort. And we also went, um, to the Fort Williams Committee, Advisory Commission Committee, and, uh, made the similar proposal, um, again, based on the, on the plan of the Fort Williams. And I, um, we're happy that we've, um, set aside, we think, more than enough funding to care of, uh, I won't read you the proposal, but Phase 1, which is a blue stone, removing the asphalt, extending the patio, and then hopefully, um, have enough for Phase 2, which is to the area to the west, which is where the, um, fire pit area is, or piece of foliage fire pit, um, to maybe put in some additional, um, paths, as well as some landscaping, so that the area's not, it just kinda gets well tried, you know, tried, and doesn't look that nice. So just, again, a way to make it, um, enhance the, the entire area of the picnic shelter.
That's great. Thank you. And could I have, don't go away. Just wait for one minute. Could I have a motion? We have some proposed language here. A motion to approve the plans, and of course, to thank the Rotary Club for its continuing generosity. Thank you. Could I have a motion? Thank you, Jamie?
I move that we accept the recommended plans, uh, and gratefully accept the funding from the Rotary Club for this project.
Wonderful. Second? Jessica?
I'll have a second.
Thank you. Discussion? Yes, Jessica?
Yep. Mr. Myers presented this to the Fort Williams Committee, I think it was two months ago?
On June 16th.
June?
June meeting.
Yeah. And, uh, it was very well received by the committee members, so, thank you again.
Jamie?
I just had a question. I didn't see, unless I missed it, um, what your thoughts are on timing for this?
I'm sorry?
What your thoughts were on timing for this?
Um, we're gonna work with Bob Malley to, we know that, um, the site is well-used, and there's, people have scheduled events. We're hopeful, uh, to get it done this fall or early spring. Again, the timing is, you know, critical for other events that are already planned there, so we, we understand that that's gonna be something we have to, we'll work around.
Thanks.
Other comments or questions? I'll just say, I thought these plans looked terrific. Thank you. And I'm very grateful for the work that you guys are doing there, guys and women.
Catherine Callahan is the one who came up with the plan, just to make sure.
Did I correct that? Okay. Great. All right, all in favor? Any opposed? No? Thank you very much. We will move on to item number 106, council goal relating to potential new revenues. Jessica, I think this was one of your goals, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, I'd be happy to. Um, this was a goal of mine, and also Counselor Ray, we, they're somewhat combined, I think. And, uh, but first of all, I would like to thank the town manager for all his help in pulling all these figures together, and helping, uh, give the report the focus that it has. Um, so, uh, the goal was to look at the various revenues that we have, um, uh, here in Cape Elizabeth, which include property taxes and other fees of various kinds, and to see what that picture looks like. Um, and in this report, you'll see that we're looking at other communities nearby us, and what they're doing to raise revenues. This is all, um, in, in light of looking at, uh, the burden on the property taxpayer, as well as what the picture, again, looks like as, in regards to what we take in and what we have to spend, to keep our, our town going, looking at parks, looking at municipal side and everything else. So, um, I think it's very interesting, and very easy reading, I think. And I wanna thank, uh, Mike again, for helping so much with that.
So I hope the council will consider this and schedule a workshop, so we can review it in depth. Wonderful. Thank you. So could I have a motion to refer this report on revenues to a future workshop? Jamie?
So moved.
Thank you. Second? Thank you, Patty. Discussion? Yes, Jamie?
I just wanna thank Jessica and Mike for, I thought it was, um, I look forward to the entire council discussing it further, but just, um, appreciate the time and effort that you both put in on it, because it was, um, a lot of good detail and thoughtful work, so, much appreciated.
Anyone else? No? I would concur. Also, as you said, very easy to understand, lots of information in here on the town website, I think, um, in the council packet certainly, and probably will be elsewhere on the town website as well. Worth reading, um, very straightforward. I do have some questions, I, I look forward to the discussion at a workshop, but, very well done. All in favor? Any opposed? No? That passes unanimously. We will move on to item number 107, collective bargaining agreement with Teamsters Local 340. Michael, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, thank you. The, we have a proposed agreement, uh, with the Teamsters Local 340, who represent Public Works employees. Uh, it's a proposed two-year contract, commence on July 1, uh, 2016, retroactive of, uh, a little over a month. Uh, it, uh, does provide for, uh, a 2.5% increase, you know, in July 1 of 2016, which was the amount that was given to most all other employees, and a 2.5% increase on July 1 of 2017. It also, uh, changes quite a bit to, uh, that we're very pleased with, language that involves disciplinary proceedings, and our ability to, to address, uh, concerns and issues, uh, through, through disciplinary proceedings. Uh, there's also a change in health insurance that, uh, that would stop some potential double-dipping, not double-dipping that's occurred, but the potential of it, particularly as we've, we've taken over community services, and we, we have a larger staff base, we wanna make sure that folks can't use... We want to make sure that folks can't use the buyout provision while they're still getting the full insurance. So that's not improved. Beyond that, there's a few minor changes in allowances. The allowances have been recalculated to be on a rate per hour rather than an annual basis as a result of the attorney who worked with us on this recommending that that's the way it's supposed to be done. So anyway, we, I really want to thank Bob Malley and Pat Dunn, who was the attorney who represented the town in these negotiations. It was a good process. They communicated with me right throughout the bargaining, although in part because we had these language issues that we wanted to deal with. We're very pleased to have an attorney representing us this particular time. Be happy to answer any questions. You may have.
Could I have a motion to approve the draft two-year collective bargaining agreement with Local 340? Jessica?
I so move.
Thank you. Is there a second on that?
I will second that.
Thank you, Patty. Discussion or questions for the manager? No? I have one quick question. Is this the first time that we had used Pat Dunn on this?
For collective, we've used her for other issues in the past. This is the first time we've used her in actual collective bargaining negotiations. We're very pleased with her.
Excellent. Good.
I just have a question.
Yep.
And Article 25, we talked about the pay increases. They have a 1, 3, 5, and 10-year anniversary schedule. Is that normally what is always set up that way with the collective bargaining, always to have those increments?
Yes.
Yes. It always is. Okay. I just haven't seen it other years. Okay.
Other questions? No? All in favor? Any opposed? No? That passes unanimously. Thank you, Michael. We will move on to item number 108, the follow-up on action at a previous meeting. And Michael, can you give us the overview on this one?
Yes, thank you. One of the items that the audience committee recommended, along with the adoption of the ordinance, is that we take a look at various town documents and see what needs to be updated. That evolved into this proposed item, which I initially drafted, and then our attorney looked at. He also added paragraph three, which was something that I asked of that, but I didn't have a clue as to how to draft it. So anyway, the good news is that basically what this does, it indicates that everyone who's on these committees continues to serve on the committee with the new name. The terms don't change. The, it addresses if there's term limits, that the time on both committees count. And then it says that all of the legal agreements, all of the materials or whatever, we could go in and make those changes simply by going and changing names without needing to come back with every last little one to the council. We can, as we find them, we can do it. Wendy is, here's where I started, been to the website, I think has updated all the references there. So we're making progress. But this is a lot of legalese, but it's important legalese, so would encourage you to adopt this item.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to accept the language that is proposed in this item? Jessica?
Yep. I so move.
Thank you. Is there a second? Thank you, Sarah. Discussion or questions for the manager on this? No? Seemed very straightforward to me. Did you have a question, Caitlin?
My only question was about the shooting range ordinance. Is it clear, I mean, the shooting range, firing range committee, because they're not continuing, so is it clear somewhere that those members are done and we're going to have new members assessed or assigned? Or where are we in that process?
You know, I'm not sure that it is clear.
Was that on our list? I know from the ordinance committee, we had a second page of recommendations that we wanted to revisit.
Yeah, and that is on the list, but I think there could be some confusion with paragraph G. So, you know, I would, if I, I would think, if, you know, you're the lawyer, I would have a comment where the period is at the end of it, except for the firing range committee, which shall be reconstituted.
Right.
Could I have a motion for that revised language?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for that? Second. Thank you. Sarah?
Yes.
Thank you. Discussion about that? Yes, Jessica?
Just a point of order. Do I, do I need to agree to amend my original motion? Is that the way to proceed?
I'll look to my
With that change, rather than I don't
It all depends. If I'm moving to amend it, then we vote on the amendment, rather than you agree. You could just agree to amend your motion.
So if that's what we have, right? We have a motion
To amend it.
To amend it.
So we have to vote on that?
I have it. I had a second.
You need to vote on the amendment.
Yes. Any questions on that? Any further discussion? No? All in favor of the amended language? Any opposed? No? Okay. So that passes. So, and did you catch the amended language?
I did.
Okay. So now we're back to the original motion. Any other discussion about the original motion? Yes, Sarah?
I just have a quick question. Do we have a workshop, workshop scheduled to address those questions on the second page?
August 29th.
Thank you. Or September 13th? Okay. Any other comments or questions on that, on the proposed language? No? All in favor? Any opposed? No? That passes unanimously. Thank you for taking care of that, Michael. And Caitlin, thank you for bringing that point up about the firing range committee. Item number 109, the Potential Citizen Survey. Michael, would you like to introduce this item?
Yeah, this is another one of the council goals. I've worked, again, with Councilor Sullivan on this one. We, I did, in fact, I went last year, last fall, to the International City and County Managers Association Conference, and visited the booth of the National Citizen Survey, because I knew the council had interest in doing this. You know, but looked at this, and looked at the survey. It looks, you know, some of it, you know, you need to change wording a little bit here and there, but it looks very applicable to Cape Elizabeth. It's, it has benchmarks that can, you know, which is one of the goals the council had, and it looks like a good survey. Jessica and I had a discussion about whether or not to come up with some local questions, and we ended up hunking on that, figuring, did we really want to get involved in that political challenge of, you know, because there's already a lot in the survey. And, you know, the council could ask questions, but suggested that, again, you refer this to a workshop to look at it, see if this is a survey you want to do, or if you want to head off in another direction. But this looks like it, it's a good model, and you can pay for as many as you want to put the pricing and all that, but you can talk about that at the workshop.
Okay. Could I have a motion to refer this to a workshop? Jessica?
I move that we refer this citizen survey, potential citizen survey, to a workshop.
Great. Thank you. Is there a second? Sarah? Thank you. Any discussion about that?
I just have a quick question.
Sarah?
Last time we started the comp plan, we did a pretty comprehensive survey. Would this be in place of that one, or would it be in addition to the one we might consider conducting before we embark on another comprehensive plan?
Through the chair?
Yes.
You know, I would, you know, this is a survey that we're actually looking at, maybe doing every couple of years. I would think that you might want to do the comprehensive planning survey in an intervening year, because I think those, my sense is, those are different levels of questions and more specificity that the Comprehensive Planning Committee would probably want to have. You know, it's tough to say before they're formed, but my guess is they'll want their own questions.
I think that makes sense. Yes, Jessica?
Yep. And this, this survey, if you haven't had a chance to look through it, it's very broad. It covers just about everything. And from, do you feel safe in your home, you know, that kind of thing. And so I think this kind of thing, you know, if the council decides to do this particular survey every couple of years, is, would be a fantastic barometer for the town. And, but the comp plan committee survey for that group certainly would be, I think, a lot more specific to Cape Elizabeth. This is very broad, and yet the questions, when Mike and I were reviewing all this and thinking about coming up with questions that are more focused on Cape Elizabeth, the topics on this survey, again, were so comprehensive that we didn't think in advance of a workshop with everyone going into detail that we would go down that road, because it's pretty impressive.
Not, I think, and just to be clear, I think there's a lot of questions in this survey that were in the last comp plan survey. So when the comp plan, you know, if they want to do a survey like they did last time, they might actually be able to have a shorter phone call and not ask as many questions, because this data will also be available to them.